Call to order. City of Dickinson Commission meeting for October 5th, 2021. The record show that Commissioner Otoman is not present. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the order of business?
Thank you, President Decker. No, there is no change to the order of business.
Thank you. Any questions on the order of business? Not, I'd look for a motion on the order of business.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the order of business by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the order of business? Not all in favor of the order of business as presented state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the commission wishes to discuss?
I think we'll approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into administration and finance. First item up is our 2022 budget, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker. And commissioners, before you is the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1725 of the 2022 budget, and from the last reading, there has been no changes. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Commissioners, any questions on the 2022 budget? There are no questions. I'd look for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the second reading and final passages of Ordinance 1725.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve 1725 with a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item is a presentation. This will be brought to us by Museum Director Furman. This is a local landmark designation.
Good afternoon, President Decker, Commissioners.
Afternoon.
Tonight, the Historic Preservation Commission seeks the city commission's acceptance of its recommendation that three structures, which will be collectively known as Dickinson City Hall, be recognized as local landmarks. These three structures are historically known as Merchant's National Bank, Reed Brothers Store, and Parker &amp; Company Market. Formal recognition of local landmark status is going to be via resolution. I don't have the resolution number. Now before the permission, which the Historic Preservation Commission asks the city to adopt said resolution, would you like me to read the resolution for the record?
I think we have.
You got it there?
We have all, all the copy in our packets here, the resolution. Are there any questions on the resolution? I guess my only question would be making it a, it's just a local.
This is a local landmark?
Local, so nothing.
That has no kind of statutory effect on any kind of changes to the buildings at all?
Okay. That's what I was wondering. It affects code somehow that any modifications are...
Oh, no.
Sometimes on historic buildings, once you, they've entered into landmark.
Typically more national register than, than local. So I'm more of a fan of the local, where you can let the buildings kind of dynamically change. And incidentally, I just want to compliment the commission and city staff on making this change for the new city, the new city hall. You know, in five years here, I've kind of noticed that North Dakotans are pretty frugal and, and they like to use things. And, you know, what you're doing with these buildings in downtown, saving these historic buildings, continuing to use them going forward, I think it's a great example, particularly because our downtown is loaded with some really terrific historic buildings.
I agree with you. There's a lot of little hidden gems people don't realize that we have downtown.
Absolutely.
So you get into them and explore a little bit. They're, they're pretty fascinating. And then, just, I'll make a comment after we discuss this resolution, but it's about some of the things you guys have been doing, I think are just wonderful over at the museum. Any other comments or questions on the local landmark designation?
I think it's a good thing to recognize these buildings, and like you said, there's a lot of great downtown buildings out there that we hope get preserved and remodeled to this state at some point, so.
We have a few more to work on, but that's okay. Hopefully.
We've got time.
We have time, so. Any other questions or comments on 29-2021?
I'd move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The one comment, your local pieces that you're doing on all the small cities, I think it's just wonderful.
Oh, the Hart River.
Lot of the lost little cities that are out there, and, and even putting in the photos of all the Dickinson of the past and, and what they were. I mean, if you look at the building we're moving into and what it used to be.
We get, we're getting terrific feedback on that.
That's great.
Really terrific.
Hopefully, there's people, if there are people, and I'll say this to people watching, if you know something about these lost communities or some of these buildings, please contact, you know, the museum, and we'll give them some information. I think it would just, it'd be helpful to keep developing that.
Really would be.
Yep.
We're always looking for more pictures and things as well. So just want to mention, we're about this close, I think, to getting a formal decider on date for the lift of the Tyrannosaur.
Nice.
Fossil could be as soon as a week. Don't hold me to that. Who knows what's going to happen with fires and things like that, but that's what the helicopter company is telling us, so Denver's getting real excited.
Great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into public safety. Next item up is our fire department with their monthly report. Chief Presnel.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. I'm before you this afternoon to present the monthly report for the fire department for September. Just as a reminder, here's the services we do provide to the community: fire suppression, EMS response, hazmat, public education, fire prevention, and then we are a part of several regional response teams. We responded to 60 calls for service in September. Puts us at about 580 for the year, which is a 25% increase from 2020. This month, it was slightly lower than this time last year, but consistently over 2021, we've seen an increase in calls. Just like every other month, EMS calls tend to be our largest number of calls we're responding to, and we've noticed over the months, that number just keeps on rising. We're seeing a lot more EMS calls. And then false alarms, false calls comes in second, and then fires and hazardous conditions are tied for third. We did see quite a few fires this last month. Calls by station, you can see it's split. The majority of our calls are ran from Station 1, the southern station. I wanted to show you this heat map of where our calls are happening. This is just for the month of September. Where you see red spots, multiple calls happen in that area, because I wanted to kind of preface this next slide on why our response times increased a little bit or slightly was because of how spread out our calls were across the entire city. They weren't specifically in one area or another. It was just all around the city. So that did bring our response times down slightly. We completed 341 hours of training this month, which puts us at about 5,282 hours year-to-date. We're about 84% with our annual required training complete, so we're sitting pretty good. We're actually a little ahead of schedule. And one last thing I did want to mention is, this last month, myself and Administrator Winningham did meet with the ambulance service just to discuss EMS response in general. We're seeing a lot, like I said, increased EMS calls, a lot more transfers for the ambulance service, and a lot of stack calls happening, calls happening at the same time, which is causing some delays, sometimes in ambulance response. So we are meeting with them to discuss on how we can kind of improve responses as we're seeing these increases. And with that, I'd gladly answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Presnel. Any questions? Or Chief Presnel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move into engineering. First item up is the North Dakota Department of Transportation Cost Participation, Construction and Maintenance Agreement for Fourth Avenue East, the Urban Roads Project, and this will be handled by interim city engineer Marshick.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Before you is the DOT Cost Participation, Construction, and Maintenance Agreement for Fourth Avenue East, which is an urban's road project from 21st Street East to 26th Street East. The project includes urban road section, sidewalk, signing, and lighting, and it has a maximum funding match of $800,000. The agreement's a standard form for federally funded urban roads projects, and the city engineering staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions on this item?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this urban roads improvement? This is a cost share with North Dakota Department of Transportation.
Just a reminder, Loretta, what's, what's our share of this project, then?
I believe it's around $200,000.
Are there any other questions? Are no other questions, I'd look for a motion on this contract with the North Dakota Department of Transportation.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is our Riverfront Estates Third Edition Development Agreement. This again will be handled by interim city engineer Marshick.
Thank you. This agreement has been included in your packet, and it is with Venture Commercial LLC for Riverfront Estates Third Edition. The final plat for this property has been completed and recorded with the county, and city staff has worked with the applicant to finalize the DA for your assessment. Engineering staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions on this agreement?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this development agreement? Hearing no questions, I would look for a motion on this development agreement.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is our 2022 Millen Overlay Project. Interim city engineer Marshick will be handling this.
President Decker and Commissioners, staff's been working with KLJ to determine options for the 2022 Millen Overlay Project. James Kiderowski is here with us this evening, and he's going to walk us through some slides similar to what we did last year to show you different locations that we looked at, street qualities, and compared with the budget that we have for next year of $4.5 million. I'll let him begin, and then if you have questions for us, can ask us as we go. James?
Thank you, Loretta, and good evening to President and Commissioners. Loretta said, "I'm here to give an update on the 2022 Millen Overlay." And the Millen Overlay Project consists of a new asphalt overlay on an existing milled surface, along with concrete repairs and infill of any sidewalk or curb that's not present. And to help fund this project, similar to last year, we're looking at creating a special improvement district. And as per the city assessment policy, the only items or the only costs that are to be assessed to landowners are the costs for curb and gutter repair and sidewalk repair, as well as any, any boulevard driveway within the city right-of-way. So no costs for asphalt pavement or costs for ADA ramps will be assessed to landowners, just those concrete items adjacent to their own property. Just to be clear, that tonight, we're not looking to create any SID. That whole process is coming likely in the winter. And before we get to the map on my next slide, I just want to quick go over a little bit of history on these Millen Overlay projects. In 2019, the city commissioned, I think it was MDS Technologies, to perform a pavement management report, and among other things, this report outlined all the pavement conditions for all the streets in the city of Dickinson. In that report, they have a color-coded map showing the various pavement conditions ranging from blue to purple to orange to red, and we'll show that in the upcoming slide here. Last year, in 2021, KLJ and the city engineering department identified six different zones that were most in need of a Millen Overlay improvement. And last year, we selected Zone 1, and that project is currently wrapping up. Pavement is scheduled to conclude in the next, in the upcoming two or three weeks. And what we did for this project, 2022 project, is we looked at the remaining five zones, and we updated the cost estimates for this year, and we further vetted them between the city and KLJ. So looking at the map now, will show you the different zones we're looking at numbered 1 through 6, and, there it is. So the different zones are outlined in this yellow boundary, and each and every street is color-coded according to that PMR report mentioned earlier. As you can see in the legend, the blue streets are the, are the streets that are in best condition. The red streets are in worst condition. Zone 1, as I mentioned before, was selected for this year's project, so that's all shown in blue. And then we are now looking at Zone 2, 3, 4, which are over on 10th Avenue East, and Zone 5 and 6 between the railroad and Hart River, bisected by South Main Avenue. Some things you might point out is that Zone 2 is one of the smaller zones that we're looking at, and Zone 5 and 6 are actually in most need of pavement improvements. You can see Zone 5 has a few blocks that are colored in red, which indicates the greatest need. Now, on the next slide, we'll show the cost breakdown for all the different zones. You can see a table for each zone, and they're broken out into individual streets, and at the bottom, there's a total for each zone. And just quickly go over these totals. Zone 2, as I mentioned, which is the smallest zone, would likely cost under $2 million. And Zone 3 and Zone, Zone 3 and Zone 6 are around $3 million. Cost for Zone 4 is about $3.175. As I mentioned, Zone 5 with the greatest need is going to be the most expensive at $4.15 million. Now, depend, now you can do any combination or any single zone, any single zone we'd like, but it is KLJ's recommendation to go with Zone 5 as it fits best the $4.5 million budget we have for this year. So on to the next slide. I'd just like to go over the schedule should we decide to move forward with a given zone. The design process is likely to begin this fall with some survey and planning, and SID creation, as I mentioned, would likely happen around the wintertime, with bidding in the spring and construction happening in summer of 2022. That's a very similar schedule to what happened with the 2021 project as well. So I just have one map at the end I'd like to share with you. It's a little more clear view of the zones we're looking at. Again, Zone 1 is this year's project, and we are looking at Zone 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and it is our recommendation to proceed with Zone 5 for this year. So with that, I would like to open it up to any questions from Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Kiderowski. Any questions? James?
There must be a lot of tough concrete in those areas. There's a big assessment.
Right, yes, in Zone 5 and 6. Has the most roughest curb and gutter sidewalk. Yes, if you went back to that cost estimate, you can see right below the grand totals is the, just the totals for the concrete assessments. You can see Zone 5 has the highest amount there. It's like over $1 million of just concrete work.
Probably the two oldest parts of town.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's one of the older, yeah, that's probably original concrete down there, so.
A lot of it.
Yeah.
There's probably some sidewalk missing. Right?
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Kiderowski on KLJ's recommendation? Are we looking for a motion to approve this, though? I think you would like one, right?
I think it would be good if you would share with us a vote, so we have clear direction of how you would like us to proceed.
Well, then I would make a motion to accept KLJ's recommendation to do Zone 5 for our 2020 Millen Overlay Project.
Have a motion to accept recommendation from KLJ for the 2022 Millen Overlay by Commissioner Frederick.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up is Public Works, and we have a report on a composting grant. This will be handled by recycling coordinator Schumacher. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for having me here. I was asked to give an update on a grant that we received. It's a cooperative grant with the USDA and the NRCS. It is a community compost and food waste reduction grant, and just to be clear, it's not anything that we, as the city, are doing ourselves. It's to help residents get started composting in their backyards, kind of divert some of that usable waste, so we have that out of the landfill. We did partner for this. That was one of the requirements of the grant. We partnered with Peace Lutheran Church and their community garden. We partnered with the Urban Forestry Committee. We partnered with NDSU Research Extension Center and NDSU Stark Billings County Extension, as well as Dickinson Parks and Rec. So we had a pretty, pretty big group to partner with there, and they're helping out with sites as well as educational information for our residents. The federal share that we were awarded was $66,224. There is a city share. We offered that all as in-kind services, so we were able to either offer a monetary match or as in-kind services, and so we went ahead and did in-kind services for that instead. And that includes my wages for two hours a week for the next two years, and then the administrative assistant for our department for one hour a week for the next two years. That also includes a community site at our facility, as well as five other community sites around the city of Dickinson. And then that would be, you know, in-kind use of office supplies and things like that. For the federal share, what they're giving for us with that money that we get, we'll get compost bins for the public, so we have enough money to get 300 compost bins for the public to start this off as a pilot project. And then we will be able to offer countertop bins and kitchen scales so that residents can measure the waste that they're diverting, so we actually have a unit of measure to share with the USDA and NRCS. And they also will provide a skid steer, or money will help us purchase a skid steer attachment compost turner for the landfill as well. And we will be able to use, get materials for all of the community sites that we have as well. So we'll have three bin setups at all of the community sites, as well as provide the materials needed to turn and move the compost. So does anyone have any questions about the grant that we received?
Part of the educational process is if, if people are going to start doing this in their backyard, to be mindful of their neighbors.
Yes, yes. That's a big part of it, is to learn how to compost properly. I know that the city doesn't have any ordinance so far that talks about that, but that is one of the things that we do talk about. I, I myself compost in my backyard, and my neighbors are, are pretty okay with it. I haven't had any issues so far. And that is part of that with the NDSU Research Extension and the Stark Billings County, yeah, Stark Billings County Extension, those guys have a wealth of knowledge to share with the residents on how to compost properly. Biggest thing for this is making a really nice soil amendment. You know, around here, one of our biggest problems is healthy soil, so this is a good way to do that without having that extra waste in our landfill. And, and just to note, we were one out of 24 in the United States that got this grant, and we were the only ones in our region.
That's good. Like I said, as long as we're prepared to address that, that people are doing this in the proper manner, so we don't have neighbors calling in.
Right. And just to be clear, this is a pilot project, so we're only set to handle 300 people, and only people that have signed up for the pilot are to be part of this. So it's not, I mean, people are welcome to come and learn about it, but as far as the startup supplies, that's just for people who are part of the pilot project.
Will there be, there'll be documentation coming in then for the commission to approve? This is just a report tonight?
Yep, this is just a report, yep.
Okay.
And then we do, just to give you guys a heads up, we are looking at two other grants for future for the solid waste and recycling program as well, to kind of help move things along with recycling. So I just wanted to kind of give that plug as well.
Well, I, I know that there is some interest from businesses that have contacted me. They want to do some kind of commercial. I know that's a challenge.
Yes.
So we'll have to address that again maybe in 2022, and see what we can do for some of the businesses that want to participate.
And one of the grants that we're looking at could help with that a little bit. It's a grant that's up to $500,000, so that's something that could really help us out with that expansion. And I also have been keeping a list of the businesses that are interested as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right. The next item up is planning. We have a Chapter 39 Amendment, wireless communication. This will be city-county planner, Mr. Josephson, and city attorney Winko handling this.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners, Steve Josephson. This is the second reading of a, of Ordinance 1726, which would, if approved, would establish, would establish procedures and requirements and standards for wireless, wireless telecommunications facilities in the, in the public right-of-way. There have been no changes since the first reading, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson or Mrs. Winko on 1726? We had the public hearing last meeting, so this is just the second, the second reading and final passage of 1726.
I'll just, to be politically correct, it says, item D, it says, let's see, the city engineer or his designee, should it be or their designee?
We'll go his or her.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on Chapter 39 Amendment, Ordinance 1726? Okay, any other comments or questions on Chapter 39 Amendment, Ordinance 1726? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Don't move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Usually I get to tell Mr. Hadley that he has to take a timeout, but it is 5 o'clock, so. Public hearing and public comments, not on the agenda, 5:00 p.m. You have any, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns or concerns, and we'll try to address them. If you're watching online and you wish to call in, 701-456-7006. Anyone have any comments from the public that were not on the agenda? Seeing no one from the public has any comments, we'll close the public hearing and public And we will go back to our next amendment, which is a Chapter 39 Amendment to Adult Entertainment Center. And this is Ordinance 1727, and this will be planning director Hadley and city attorney Winko.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioner. This is the second reading, as you said, for Ordinance 1727. We had the public hearing last time. There hasn't been any changes or public comment on this ordinance since the public hearing, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hadley or city attorney Winko? Not, I'd look for a motion on 1727.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a Chapter 39 Amendment to our definitions, and this is Ordinance 1728. This will be handled by city-county planner Josephson and city attorney Winko. I think maybe you're a little bit more involved with that, or is that Mr. Josephson?
We were both involved with it. President Decker, Commissioner Steve Josephson, there were a number of definitions that required being added to the zoning ordinance due to the, to the items that you're, that you're hearing, that you're hearing tonight. A number from the wireless communications one, and I think there were a few from the other ordinances. And, and city attorney Winko crafted, crafted changes to the definition section of the zoning ordinance, and I'm just shepherding it through. So this was, this is the second here, second reading on this. There have been no changes since, since the first reading, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson or Mrs. Winko on 1728? This is the second reading, so I'd look for a motion on 1728.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of 1728 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a Chapter 3 Amendment, Adult Entertainment. This is planning director Hadley and city attorney Winko. This is the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1729.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioner. As you said, the second reading of this Ordinance 1729, it's actually amending not the Land Use Code, but the City Code, Chapter 3. This had a public hearing last time as well with no public comment, and there hasn't been any public comment on this to me either since that time, and the staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley or Mrs. Winko on 1729? This is the second reading and final passage of 1729. If there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have a special use permit for a group daycare.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners, Commission members. This is located 832 Third Avenue West here in Dickinson. It's a family daycare at this time. The owner is applying for a group daycare, which allows them more children on-site. They have been approved, went through the public hearing process. There was not any comments against this request. Staff also hasn't received any comments since the planning and zoning meeting, and staff would recommend approval. And this would be a Resolution 30-2021. My memo in there, I didn't realize Bob was going to steal one of my resolution numbers, so.
You got it in before you, so. All right, any questions on 30-2021? Any comments or questions on 30-2021? I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have nothing from building and code enforcement this evening. Last item up is Number 10. Commissioners, any items you wish to discuss that were not on the agenda this evening?
I have one thing that I would like to bring up just quick. Invite the Commissioners, with one parcel of land that we just approved, the Riverfront, I'm sure every one of us has received probably an email from a resident in that area, maybe not, maybe just the people that sit on planning and zoning. There's a connector road out there that we never finished as a city. Mrs. Marshick probably knows what I'm talking about. I think it's Fifth. There's Riverfront Road out there, and then there's Fifth. And I think that's Street, right?
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street. The one thing that we need, I think, to look at in the future, and I would just invite you all to drive out there and look at it. When we're doing projects like this in the future, I think it behooves us as a city to look at those connectors that, and, and go ahead and finish them off, rather than deal with this in a manner that we are now. So, but I would just invite you all to drive out there and look at it. It's, it creates an interesting dynamic out there on that road, so, which should have been a collector road all the way and finished probably at one point.
That was the intention, I believe, when that development was platted to the south, that Fifth would be the collector. And River Drive would be a local road.
Right. And we don't have a road there in Fifth right now. River Drive ends up being everything, collector and residential road, so.
Okay, anything else from the Commissioners?
No.
Hearing nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
We are adjourned.